Good evening. And welcome to the April 2022 RTM meeting. My name is Alexis Vilgaras, RTM moderator. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call shall be omitted. April marks the two-year anniversary of the RTM entering the Zoom universe. So I thought there would be the most appropriate people to lead us in the pledge this evening are Craig Jones and Jenny Larkin, who are our extraordinary tech team that manage this entire circus behind the scenes. And without them, we'd probably still be hobbling along like we were two years ago. So if I could have them come up and recite the pledge, and hopefully the system will still work while they're not behind the desk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As all members have received a copy of the minutes from the March meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted by unanimous consent. I would now like to recognize Valerie Stauffer of District 7, please.
This is a memorial for Marie Jacobus Herzig. Whereas Representative Town Meeting District 7 members wish to recognize the life and contributions of Marie Jacobus Herzig, I'm giving a brief memorial of her many contributions to the citizens of Greenwich. I first became acquainted with Marie when she was elected to District 7, where she was to serve for 16 years. She was chair of our district and was also the first woman to serve as the chair of the Cost Containment Committee. Perhaps no surprise to current RTM members, that committee, now known as the Budget Overview Committee, was considered a hotbed of controversy. Marie is remembered as a firecracker activist seeking cuts in all budgets, but was also recognized as a lovely and inspirational leader. She developed the budgeting process adopted and used now by all RTM committees. Marie went from high school in New Jersey to Duke University, where she sang in the University Chapel Choir, and graduated in 1964 with a major in English literature. She earned a PhD in that field from the University of Pennsylvania, where she later taught freshman English. After her marriage to Mel Herzig, the couple moved to Greenwich, where they raised their three daughters. Combining her love of education and her involvement with local schools, she served as president of the Glenville PTA and president of the Greenwich Association for Public Schools. She was, for 30 years, president of the Greenwich Scholarship Association that over these decades has distributed more than $16 million to thousands of Greenwich students. In 2003, she received the prestigious YWCA Spirit of Greenwich Award, honoring volunteers in our community. She is survived by her daughters Kathryn Holden of Greenwich, Karen Geller, and Kristen Herzig of Ipswich Mass, and son-in-laws and seven grandchildren. A memorial service will be held at Christ Church in May, and gifts in her memory may be made to the Greenwich Scholarship Association for the fund known as Marie Scholars. Could our members have a few moments of silence in memory of Marie?
Thank you. Would all the members please stand so we may honor Ms. Herzig with a moment of silence, please? Thank you. If we could recognize Cheryl Moss, Chairwoman of District 8, please. I believe she's on Zoom.
Good evening. I rise today to offer tribute for RTM member Deborah Burner. She was District 8, dear, excuse me. I'm offering a tribute to District 8's dear Debbie Burner, who passed away on March 8, 2022. Debbie was born in 1941 in Flushing, Queens. She and Gary Burner shared 56 years of marriage, 54 of which they lived in Greenwich, raising their family. Debbie earned her undergraduate degree alongside her twin sister Lynn from University of Buffalo, and then went on to earn a master's degree at Teachers College, Columbia University. It was during this time that she met Gary at an Upper East Side bar. The couple married near Debbie's childhood home in Bayside, then moved to Riverside, Connecticut, where they welcomed two sons. The family eventually settled in Cos Cob on a cul-de-sac on Dandy Drive, where Debbie enjoyed her flourishing garden and the Burner boys played street hockey, often with their mother as an eager participant. Debbie often lamented the fact that league sports were not available to girls during her own childhood despite being a more than proficient player in many contests on sandlots and back streets of Bayside. She was the perfect sports mom, cheering on her boys during their hockey and baseball games. Later in life, she continued her support as a proud grandma, never missing her grandchildren's sporting events, recitals, theatrical performances, confirmations and graduations, and often traveled across the country to do so. Debbie was an active citizen and devoted her time to many civic and cultural causes, both professionally and as a volunteer. Professionally, Debbie followed in her parents' footsteps and devoted much of her life to teaching. In addition to her 29 years as an educator and for four-year-olds at First Church Preschool of Greenwich, she worked at Stanford Hospital as an operating room coordinator for 15 years. In her personal time, she was an active member of the First Congregational Church of Greenwich, over the years serving as Sunday schoolteacher, choir member, deacon, chair of choir, pianist, caregiver with the Stephen Ministry, member of the Hats Off Book Club, and more. The church was the center of the community life. We were performing in the annual Messiah concert was the highlight of her holiday season. An equally active member of this civic community in the town of Greenwich, Debbie served as an RTM member for seven years as the delegate for Health and Human Services, and was a fierce advocate for Nathaniel Witherell, where she played piano for seniors. She was a docent at the Bruce Museum, a volunteer at the River House Adult Day Center, and a gardener at the Montgomery Pineetum Greenhouse, devoting much of her time to the Greenwich Botanical Center and the Pineetum, where she walked every day. In her retirement years, Debbie gleefully traveled the globe in the company of friends and often with her beloved twin sister Lynn. During all these travels, Debbie loved to visit museums, stroll, bike and kayak. She famously earned a cheeky reputation for her complete disregard of alpine lake water temperatures or beach currents. She also cherished her time in the Sun Valley, Idaho, hiking, biking, cross-country skiing, and attending the Sun Valley Symphony concerts. An avid reader, Debbie loved learning about her surroundings wherever she was, and she had a genuine sense of inquisitiveness that was always accompanied by her easy smile, vibrant blue eyes, and her gentle speaking voice. Rest in peace, Debbie. We will all miss you. Let us observe a moment of silence for Debbie Burner.
Would all the members please rise so we may observe a moment of silence? Thank you. Kathryn LaBabo, our moderator pro tem, and I, along with the Assistant Town Clerk, Kim Spazano, the Town Clerk, Jackie Budkins, Tom Klein, the Director of IT Technology, and Jenny Larkin, our IT whiz expert, have been meeting almost every other week since January to hopefully be able to roll out remote voting using this device. So we have been working with vendors. Our goal is hopefully to have something towards the end of the year, early next year, where we can continue with hybrid meetings. But for those who choose to participate in person, we hopefully are moving to a better, faster, quicker way. It's super easy. It's got three buttons, yes, no, abstain. It tabulates almost instantly. It would put the 12 hardest-working people in the RTM, the district tabulators, out of a job, and I'm sure you would be thrilled with that. It does require an RFP process. It requires going through purchasing. Government is slow. But as things unfold, I hope we will soon be able to give you more details, do tons of testing so that we don't go live and completely fall flat on our faces. But I do think that this gives us a new tool. It will reduce human error. It will relieve the tabulators of this job that they've been saddled with for two years. And as things unfold, we look forward to bringing you into the process. And hopefully, we will all be using this either here. And if you want to participate from home, it's just using your iPhone or your laptop or however you vote. So we will continue to update you, and away we go with that. If anyone wants to see it, you're welcome to see it as well. It's not activated. Okay, so that concludes our announcements and brings us to our call for this evening. I notified the membership that I would recommend the following organization of our agenda based on reports received. Pursuant to our rules, I will designate items 1 through 9 and 11 to our consent calendar. And if those items remain on our consent calendar, we will have no committee reports and no discussion on those items. However, if at least 20 members object, the items can be removed from the consent calendar and taken up separately. I will recommend that we take up items 12 and 13 separately. Item 10 has been withdrawn. I understand that District 2 plans to object to the organization of the consent calendar, and at the appropriate time, I will recognize a member from that district to raise the objection. At this time, however, pursuant to our rules, I will designate for our consent calendar the following items. And if those items remain on the consent calendar, the only thing you will hear is what I am about to say. Item 1 is the nomination of Marian Ramos to the Board of Health for a term expiring June 30, 2026. Item 2 is the nomination of Steve Katz to the Board of Selectmen for a term, up to the Board of Selectmen, to the Board, the member of the Commission of Aging for a term expiring June 30, 2025. Item 3 is appointing James Ty Anderson to the Harbor Management Commission for a term beginning upon appointment and expiring March 31, 2025. Item 4 is the nomination of Edward Keller to the Harbor Management Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2025. Item 5 is the nomination of William Finger to the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees for a term expiring March 31, 2025. Item 6 is the nomination of Sally Bednar to the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees for a term expiring March 31, 2025. Item 7 is the nomination of W. Brooks Harris to the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees for a term expiring March 31, 2024. Item 8 is the nomination of Anthony Chiketti to the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees for a term expiring March 31, 2024. Item 9 is the nomination of Romulo Samaniego to the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees for a term expiring March 31, 2025. And item 11, yes, item 11 is a request from the Fire Chief for $9,870 to be appropriated to account A20654200, Maintenance of Machinery. Are there any objections to the designation of those items on the consent calendar? Is District 2 going to raise an objection, or am I moving on? Can you just make sure that they are not raised? Is there anyone, is Wilman Asinovich raising her hand? Is anyone from District 2 raising their hand? Okay, I just want to confirm that District 2 is not going to raise an objection at this time. Is that correct? Okay. Hearing none, the consent calendar has no objections. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards? Consent calendar items 1 through 9 and 11. And please proceed to poll your delegation. And for members who are here, you're welcome to walk up to your tabulator and give them your vote. Okay, we're still waiting for the vote, but we're going to keep humming along. The first of our separate items now comes before us, which is a resolution from the Fire Chief and I, the Fire Department. And I believe we have the Assistant Fire Chief Charles Lubewicki on the phone, who is going to introduce this substitute resolution for us.
Yes, good evening. Item 12 resolved that the sum of $117,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to account A20754050, Maintenance of Building Systems.
Mr. Lubewicki, my understanding was as you were offering a substitute resolution for the amount of $114,662, not $117,000. Is that?
I apologize. That is correct.
Okay, so everyone understands the amount is for a substitute resolution Is there a second? Perfect. The item has been moved and seconded, and it's now before us. May we have the reports from the three committees that consider this item? I believe Finance is first with Brooks Harris.
Thank you. We took up this item to consider an interim request so the Fire Department can put in devices to clear the air in several of the fire stations. We had some discussion about what this would be used for. We noted that we discourage interim requests. We believe that sometimes people use that as a means to get around the regular budgeting process. They can't get their way. That was not the case with this. This was an item that is definitely needed. It's not something that they're trying to sneak through. It hits several of the areas that we feel most strongly about, safety, making sure buildings are up to code, and required maintenance. Those are all things that we strongly support. We had a healthy debate, and then we approved this 12-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will have Richard Newman of Town Services give the Town Services report.
Madam Moderator, delegates from the RTM. Item 12 was before Town Services. We had Chief McHugh, Assistant Chiefs Kozak and Lubewicki with us. We were doing our annual budget review, along with items 10, 11, and 12. Item 12 asks for $114,662 to be appropriated to repair and upgrade the vehicle exhaust removal systems in five of our seven stations. We discussed why this is an interim appropriation and not included in the maintenance budget. We learned that due to COVID restrictions, outside vendors have not been allowed into the stations for two years, and a survey of the stations was just completed. Normal repairs and maintenance is included in the 2022-23 budget and will cover future costs. During the discussion, it was pointed out by District 12 that $34,646 of the request is for adding exhaust connections for two volunteer company-owned antique vehicles. Those vehicles are in Cos Cob and Sound Beach stations. The District 12 delegate thought the volunteers should pay the cost of adding those vehicles. During our discussion, it was noted that, one, many of the vehicles in the stations are purchased and operated by the volunteers and have saved the town hundreds of thousands of dollars in capital expenditures. These repairs and upgrades were recommended by the Fire Department's Health and Safety Committee. Exhaust fumes in fire stations are one of the leading cancer risks for firefighters. Number three, the antiques are part of the community outreach program of the Fire Department. After the discussion, District 12, or the District 12 delegate, brought a motion to reduce the item by the $34,646 allocated to the antiques. The vote was one in favor, 11 against, and the motion, on the motion, and it failed. Item 12, as it appears on the call, was voted on. The vote was 10-2-0, with District 9 and 12 voting no. The item passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if we could have Craig Emmetson, the Vice Chair of Public Works, deliver that report. I believe he's on the panel, Jenny. Mr. Emmetson, could you please accept the panelist's invitation? We're prompting you for that.
Okay, I'm here. I am Craig Emmetson. I'm the Vice Chair of Public Works Committee. And I'll be brief, because they really covered what went on at our meeting as well. We took a vote on this item, and we approved it 11-0-0, with one vote absent, one district absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Debate on item number 12? No one has signed up, but I don't know if anyone has anything to say about this? Okay. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting card? Item 12, and proceed to poll your delegation. Thank you. What numbers? Okay. Before we start with our final item of the evening, item 13, I did want to provide you with the consent calendar vote. Those in favor, 187; opposed, 3; abstaining, 20. The consent calendar has carried. Our final call for the, our final item on the call this evening is item 13. May we have Sean O'Keefe, the Chief Financial Officer for the Board of Education, brought up to the panel? Mr. O'Keefe, you are welcome to introduce the item.
Thank you very much, and good morning, good evening, everybody. Resolved that the maintenance agreement, Agreement #12.22-01 bracket 21 and encroachment permit between the town and the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation, allowing for the reconstruction of the access road for Cardinal Stadium and Planting Plan, are hereby approved, and the First Selectmen and/or Director of School Facilities for the Board of Education are hereby authorized to execute such maintenance agreement and encroachment permit in the form attached in the explanatory comments of the call of this meeting.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? The item has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that consider this item, beginning with Kimberly Blank of the Education Committee?
Thank you, and good evening. Item 13 is a maintenance agreement between the town of Greenwich and the state of Connecticut for a portion of property at Cardinal Stadium that is adjacent to Route 1. Sean O'Keefe, Chief Operating Officer of the Board of Education, Dan Watson, Director of School Facilities, and Abby Wadler from the town's legal department, presented this item to us and answered questions from the committee. Megan Damato, Director of Risk Management for the town, also answered follow-up questions via email after our meeting. Mr. Watson explained that the portion of property in question is necessary for Cardinal Stadium's operation. It enables a widened access point for vehicles to reach the ADA parking lot and for emergency vehicles to enter the property. He said that the curb cut is already there and that the town has been using the property. But since there are now improvements being made as part of the Cardinal Stadium project, the state is requiring a maintenance agreement from the town. Ms. Wadler explained that while the town's legal department doesn't like all of the elements of this form of agreement, it is a form that is provided by the state, and the state is non-negotiable on this. The town entered into a similar agreement in 2018 for a sewer project. The town charter will not allow us to indemnify another party without an appropriation for that indemnification. Since this agreement requires the town to indemnify the state for any liability on this piece of property, the town will need to purchase insurance coverage for this. The estimated cost of purchasing additional coverage will be $2,500 per year. After our meeting, Megan Damato emailed the committee to explain that this will purchase $3 million in coverage. After that, the town's Tower of Policies totaling $35 million in coverage will sit on top of that. Abby Wadler said that even though it does not like all of the terms of this agreement, the town's legal department is recommending that we approve it as it is necessary for the functioning of the redesigned Cardinal Stadium. In our committee discussions, several issues and questions were raised. Some wanted to know if Cardinal Stadium could have been designed in such a way as to avoid the need for this type of maintenance agreement. We also asked why the town was being required to sign this now and whether other property owners on Route 1 were subject to similar agreements. There was significant discussion around the terms of the insurance agreement and whether it needed to be purchased separately or could be part of an existing policy held by the town. After our meeting, there were several clarifying emails exchanged. One email looked at the net present value of a $2,500 annual cost for the next 100 years. It estimated this at about $150,000. Another clarified with the town's risk department that the sole reason we are purchasing additional insurance for this agreement is because the charter requires us to do so, since we are indemnifying another party. If we change the charter requirement, we would not need to purchase the additional $2,500 policy, since the town's risk department believes we already have adequate coverage. We voted to pass this item with a vote of 8-0-3. Districts 5, 9, and 10 abstained. District 2 was absent. Those abstaining said they abstained because there was not enough information and too many questions that could not be answered because an elected representative from the Board of Ed and from the town risk exposure was not present to answer questions. Also, one abstention said that they did not feel comfortable expressing an opinion when they didn't get the question answered as to what other businesses on US-1 are required by the state to be indemnified for their curb cuts or curb cuts plus. For example, the YWCA just up the road. Those in favor feel that the town is adequately managing the risks posed by the indemnification portion of the agreement and recognize the need to sign this agreement to enable the functioning of Cardinal Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, I believe you're here as the Vice Chairman of the Transportation Committee. Would you like to come up and give your report?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm here in place of the Chairwoman of the Committee, Kimberly Saleed. We heard from Attorney Abby Wadler and BOE Facilities Director Dan Watson. Ms. Wadler explained that the indemnification is required by the state and is not unique to this project and non-negotiable. Mr. Watson said that the new GHS access road and curb cut adds access to the ADA parking lot, replaces the sidewalk and the old curb cut. The ADA lot is already completed. The driveway is 75% completed, and the road's been leveled to eliminate emergency vehicles from bottoming out in the road. Questions came up on two issues. In response to questions about the kind of liability that the town might be subject to, Ms. Wadler explained that should there be an accident or some kind of environmental event during or after construction, the town would hold a liability. And she also said that we would, the town would have to cover that liability from the first dollar. And then, in line with our mandate as a transportation committee, questions were asked as to whether the concept of complete streets had been factored into the planning and design of the accessway, such as accommodating students who might bicycle, use scooters or skateboards, et cetera. And Mr. Watson responded that it was not. But there will be sidewalk ramps for ADA compliance. And he also noted that the next phase will be a roadway, and complete streets would be considered. There was no significant discussion or debate on the maintenance agreement beyond those questions. And our vote was 9-0-2. D-1 and D-8 abstaining. D-1 due to concerns raised by the complete streets discussion, and D-8 due to unanswered questions. District 3 was absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May we have the report from Legislative and Rules and Kip Bergweger, please?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the RTM. Legislative and Rules met last Monday, and we had, we were helped by Abby Wadler, Assistant Town Attorney, and Dan Watson and Sean O'Keefe from the Board of Education. Many of the things that have already been reported, we covered in our meeting. Just a few additional points. Our committee asked about the design of the project, and Ms. Wadler confirmed that without the encroachment onto how we want to redesign would be required. The representatives from the Board of Education explained that the geographic location of the project, which is basically a curb cut, to sustain the project's feasibility. There was a question was raised whether the state project to prepare a bridge in the state project to prepare a bridge in the vicinity would impact the project. The answer was that it would not. There was also a question whether this conflicted with the ever-source power easement that we dealt with last September. That was examined after the meeting and determined there was no problem. Mr. Watson explained the project does not result in an increase in surfaces that would create runoff, and the existing space has always been a combination of pavement and concrete. Our vote on legal order was 12-0-0. On the merits was 10-0-2, with Districts 3 and 10 abstaining based on concerns about the environment, stormwater, and traffic.
Thank you very much. Craig Amundson, our Vice Chair of the Public Works Committee, to deliver that report, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the RTM. We took this item up a week ago and had at our meeting C.O.L. O'Keefe, Facilities Manager Watson, DPW Commissioner Amy Seibert, Deputy Commissioner Michael, Greenwich Fire Department Assistant Chief Kozak, and Assistant Town Attorney Wadler, as well as BET member Erickson, and also BET member Tarkington. We basically covered the same items that everybody else referred to here. You know, we did make note that, you know, this is something that's a new, a new requirement from the state, and the fact that we've utilized that entrance for quite some time for vehicles down to the back of Cardinal Stadium, I think as a body, we maybe want to look at it and say, okay, we've gotten away with 30 some odd years of not having to pay for it. That's my commentary. We took this up and took a vote, and the vote was 10-1-0, with District 2 voting no, basically about increased liability for students potentially using the entryway to pass and go down to the school, and one absence, which was District 1. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District 1, would you care to give your district report? I know that you have a motion that you'll be offering. Mr. Lee, would you like to offer that report?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Moderator and fellow RTM members. District 1, by a vote of 11-0-0, is making a motion to postpone item 13 to the June meeting due to many unanswered questions which were reviewed during committee meetings reports. So, there you go.
Okay. So, we have our four committee reports. We have our one district report, and at this time, we will take up the District 1 motion to postpone this item to June of 2022. Mr. Dedakis, it's my understanding that you're offering that motion formally?
I can, I can do that.
You're, you're doing it, Mr. Lee. Okay.
Right. All right. So, repeating again, we make the motion to postpone item 13 to the June meeting due to many unanswered questions. There are a lot of questions that weren't answered. It was made apparent from the district committee reports that we were not provided all the details needed, as per the votes that you've heard from the committee meetings. We need this time to obtain further details as to the true cost of insurance based on renewal and discount rates, I believe, when these parameters.
All I need you to do is state the motion to postpone. We'll get it, and then we can go into the debate, so.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Just, I'll repeat again. District 1, by a vote of 11-0-0, is making a motion to postpone item 13 to the June meeting.
Perfect. Okay. That being offered on behalf of a district does not require a second debate on the District 1 motion to postpone. We do have a very brief signup sheet. I believe six people have signed up. Mr. Dedakis, I believe you are the first speaker. Are you with us?
Yes, I am with you, Madam Moderator. Thank you. Thank you very much, members of the RTM. I, I want to speak this evening to support the District 1 motion to postpone. Reading and hearing the committee reports, there are a large number of questions that need to be answered, and this postponement will give time for the town and the Board of Education to research those issues and provide those answers. Some of those questions include, does everyone along the post road who has a cutout have to sign the same onerous agreement? I personally have my doubts, but no one had any idea. Another committee member asked, what about the safety of students who ride their bikes on the sidewalk to get to the bike racks? The answer was, it's illegal to ride a bike on the sidewalk. Perhaps correct, but that doesn't mean an injured child would not come after the town and the state, who we are fully indemnifying. Someone else wanted to know what could be done to avoid signing this agreement and still achieve our goals. No one knew. But to me, perhaps the most onerous is the admission by a town attorney that they don't like portions of the agreement, yet still recommend we execute it. Some have even suggested that we amend the town charter so that the town can indemnify others without having an issue. That is a dangerous and slippery slope, and I highly recommend that we do nothing which expands the town's ability to provide indemnification without protection. There are problems with this agreement. Our committees, whereas you know the RTM does much of its work, have been diligent in asking questions and trying to do right by the town and its residents, but we need the answers to their diligent questions. By postponing this item as District 1 proposes, those answers can be provided in June, and then we can move forward on this item in a fully informed manner. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kimberly Blank, to be followed by Allison Walsh.
Good evening. I'm here to ask you to vote no on this motion to postpone. Postponing an item makes sense when we need more information. I really don't think we need more information here, and I don't think that we, as a body, are well-served to spend more time on this again in June. I think the debate has become overly complicated about something that is really a pretty small and simple decision. The situation is this. We have built a new parking lot and much of a new stadium at Greenwich High School. It is something we agreed to do when we passed the budget funding for this project. It is built, it is being used. Because we built it, the state has now looked at the way we are using the property adjacent to Route 1 and is requiring a maintenance agreement for our encroachment. The terms of this maintenance agreement are not negotiable. It is a form contract provided by the state, and they won't vary it. One of the terms is that we are required to indemnify the state for any liability on this property. Indemnification means that we are taking on a liability. Our town charter requires that anytime we take on an additional liability, we have an appropriation to specifically offset this liability. Our way of doing this is to buy a small insurance policy covering this small portion of property. The town's risk manager said that if our town charter did not require this, we wouldn't buy an additional insurance policy because we already have enough coverage. So, we have a couple of choices, none of which will change between now and the June meeting. We can approve this and spend $2,500 this year. If we feel that it is wasteful to be buying insurance that we don't otherwise need just to satisfy a charter requirement, we can look into changing the charter. Once we make a charter change, we won't need to spend $2,500 a year on this expense. We can also reject this contract. If we do this, I assume the state will say that we are encroaching on their land without their approval. We won't be able to use the new parking lot that we have already paid for and can look into the extremely time-consuming, costly, and wasteful process of reciting the parking. I'm not trying to minimize the view of people who believe that little expenses add up, and we shouldn't take a $2,500 perpetual annual expense lightly. But I believe that when we looked at the budget for Cardinal Stadium, we would not have decided to approve or reject it based on such a minimal swing in annual operating expenses. It is truly at the level of rounding error in this overall project. Let's vote to pass this maintenance agreement now, and then we can ask the town's legal department to look at the possibility of revising the charter, perhaps in a more limited way. That way, we won't have to purchase this additional insurance as part of future budget years, and we won't be in the same situation if future projects spill over onto state property. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Walsh, to be followed by James Waters. They're both online, I believe.
Hi. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
So, this is Allison Walsh from D-3. I'm told that, well, first of all, I just want to say that I think that, that we need to do this. We don't really have a choice, and it's part of a project that we've already approved, and delaying this further isn't going to change the facts, as Ms. Blank said. So, I support, I support moving ahead on this item tonight, and I oppose the motion to postpone. Thank you.
Thank you. James Waters, to be followed by Corey Williams.
Good evening, fellow members of the RTM. I speak tonight to urge you to vote against this proposed delay of item 13. Based on my conversations with fellow members in the Board of Education, I see this proposed delay as a tempest in a teapot. Delaying item 13 will delay completion of all of the work we've done at Cardinal Stadium, which is critical for both safety and security and ADA access. The concern, $2,500 for an insurance policy, along with some boogeymen brainstormed in recent days. A delay won't address pedestrian safety, which is already a key part of the plan. A delay won't address getting more cost information, which has already been provided. A delay won't uncover a scheme for Cardinal Field Phase 2, which won't be in the upcoming FY23 budget. A delay won't address a potential charter change that could be made down the road to obviate the need for a security, for a separate insurance policy, and which would obviously need more vetting. Here's what a two-month delay will do. The Board of Education wants to keep moving forward on the project. The funding for this work was already included in Phase 1. The BOE needs to sign the agreements and get the insurance in place so we can keep moving forward. Delaying something that we need to do for two months for an agreement that the town absolutely must sign directly impacts the project's schedule and use. The Board of Selectmen have already voted on this matter, approving it 3-0 on March 24 after hearing the details. Every RTM committee that heard this item last week approved it by large majorities or unanimously. A vote to delay is a vote to blame ourselves, the RTM, for delaying an important capital project on which we've already spent over $7.5 million and will spend more on in the coming years. A vote to delay is a vote to spend more on construction while we wait or redesign the road completely. Please do not vote to delay this item. Let's get it done and move forward and focus our time on larger matters that we face rather than putting up roadblocks. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Williams, to be followed by our final member who signed up, Luke Shimshock.
Good evening, members of the RTM. My name's Corey Williams from District 8. I'm on the BOC and also an alternate in the EdCom community, so I've had extensive front-row seats to all the arguments for and against postponing item 13. I urge you to vote no with the postponement and proceed with item 13 for many of the reasons that my colleagues just explained. However, it's notable that all the committees who felt the need to take up this matter voted overwhelmingly in favor of it, 41 to 1, in favor with only three abstentions. This is actually not voting on the overall project, which has already been heavily vetted and planned by several important members of the government. It is specifically on the maintenance agreement, of which this cost is not even a rounding error, as Kim suggested. A rounding error is generally considered half a percent. The overall budget for Greenwich is $450 million. This is $2,500. I'll save you the time for the math. That's 0.0005% of the annual town budget. To delay this measure for such an insignificant total proportion of the, of the overall budget sets back the timing significantly and will likely increase costs significantly as well, given the current inflationary environment. If you have to go back and rebid for new work with construction materials and wages up significantly, we're looking at a much higher increase than $2,500, I assure you. The people who want to postpone and block this have not suggested any other fit or solution that could help improve the plan that's already been put before us. It's just another do-nothing motion and kicking the can down the road. This project has been vetted long enough with enough experts that we, we should all move forward and focus on some of the other more pressing items that faces the RTM in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker, Luke Shimshock, from District 7, please. Oh, you've been accidentally promoted to a panelist, so behave while you're up there, and I hope your, your video is going to reflect appropriately.
Well, hi. Good evening. No, thank you, Alexis. Obviously, I think we all are happy that Cardinal Stadium is moving forward and toward completion. I, I would just say that, you know, this big surprise we had last Monday when this was presented is, this does represent a financial commitment to the town, and as such, this should have been reviewed by either Finance or BOC or both, and it wasn't. So, you know, just to be clear, we really haven't had a full review within the RTM. The expense itself doesn't add any value to the education of our children, so we shouldn't want that expense as part of our budget if it's not a necessary expense. And finally, I, I would just say there are ways that this expense could be eliminated, but what appears to be the case is that none of those paths were investigated. I, I think many of us are indifferent, whether it's charter change or doing a purchase of the land from the state, which is often done for a dollar in these type of transactions, or to reconfigure our encroachment so we no longer encroach and have to bear this. Those are all reasonable requests. We're going to come back in a year, two years, three years, and reconfigure that whole area when a new roadway is put in, so there'll be an opportunity to reconfigure. I don't think any of us have a problem with bearing this expense this year, next year, or the year after. The real issue that I've seen is, I've been a bit surprised that no one has said, well, gee, you know what? We have opportunities to go back and look at this, and we will do that. That's a simple thing to say. It's, it's something that often happens in these things that come before us. In this case, it didn't happen, and it hasn't happened, which in itself is concerning. We should all be concerned that we haven't had any assurance that this would receive a second look in the future. As such, I, I think if the only alternative is to postpone, then we should do that. I'd prefer not to. I'd prefer to vote to approve this item and have a group, either within the town or the RTM or somewhere, look at this to see how it can be resolved, so we don't bear that expense, because we do want the stadium to open, and we think it will be a great move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify one thing you said. I think you said that the item had not been referred to either the BOC or Finance. And as you probably know, as a member of the BOC or Finance, the BOC rarely, if ever, gets an item referred to it. It's usually the chair and the committee sort of cherry picks and figures out what they want to take up. So, had they had an inclination, they could have certainly picked this item up. It's, they rarely get a direct referral from the moderator on the call. That concludes... Oh. I'm sorry, Mr. Namon? I'm getting to that. That concludes all of the speakers. We have signed up for item 13. I will give you the vote on item 12, which was 202 in favor, 5 opposed with zero abstentions, so that item has carried. There being no further debate on the District 1 motion to postpone item 13 to June, will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards? District 1 motion to postpone item 13 to June and proceed to poll your delegation. If you are in favor of that motion, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to that motion, you would vote no. Thank you. Okay. So, I have the vote on the motion to postpone, the District 1 motion to postpone item 13 to June. Those in favor, 51; opposed, 155; abstaining, 6. That motion has failed. So, that brings us to general debate on item 13. We have two people that have signed up. Allison Walsh, to be followed by Luke Shimshock. Ms. Walsh, would you care to say anything further on this item?
I'll, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shimshock, would you care to say anything further on this
Mr. Shimshock, would you care to say anything further on this item?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, great. Those are the only two people that expressed an interest in signing up. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting card, item 13, and please proceed to poll your delegation? This is the final item for our evening, and we will need to have the vote before we can formally adjourn. I have the vote for our final item. Item 13, the maintenance agreement for Cardinal Stadium. Those in favor, 167, opposed, 35, abstaining, 2. That item has carried. There being no further business, our meeting stands adjourned. I would just like to remind everyone, though, that next month is our big budget meeting, and we do start that meeting at 7:00 PM, not 8:00 PM. So just make sure you're here at 7:00, either in the room or on Zoom land. Thank you very much, and we'll see you in May.